We pray for these civil and public service. May the mayor, the council, the people in the community communicate, cooperate, coordinate, and collaborate that efficiency and productivity may be for the city, the county, as well as the community. We ask that thou continue grace and mercy be upon us all, and we ask this evening that thou would lead God and direct this meeting in that what's said and done would be pleasing and acceptable in thy sight. Is our prayer and our request. Amen.
Amen. Please join me with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, for that prayer. Uh, approval of the minutes for February 6th work session, meeting minutes.
Motion adopted.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
A with five abstaining.
Thank you. I need approval for the February 6th regular meeting, regular council meeting. Need a motion.
Motion adopted.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see everyone. Uh, thank you to all the residents who came out as well to this council meeting and participate and local government. We appreciate what you do and certainly your involvement. We have just a pretty short mayor's message this time, so with the agenda being very brief, we're gonna try to keep this brief as well. But we want to start by saying thank you and honoring our fire chief, Mr. Jordan, who for the last eighteen years has led this department and is the longest-serving fire chief in the history of Montgomery Fire and Rescue, as the first and only black fire chief the city has ever had. Among the accomplishments for Montgomery Fire and Rescue has achieved under Chief Jordan is was the first fire department in the state of Alabama to achieve an ISO-1 rating. Uh, Chief Jordan, I want to let you know that the recent Big Ten Mayor's meeting, another mayor, I won't name the city, tried to claim that they were the first ones, and I told them we were the first, uh, prior to me coming in, uh, to achieve this ISO-1 rating. This is the highest rating the insurance services office gives fire departments in the United States. Chief Jordan was also the first fire chief to achieve CFAI International and CPSE Chief Officer accreditation. The Montgomery firefighter combat challenge scene, which Chief Jordan established, has also won four world championships, as well as multiple regional and national championships. Montgomery Fire established the city's first certified dive rescue team and its first type-four technical rescue team. Montgomery Fire has increased the number of paramedics within Montgomery Fire Rescue and expanded the emergency services medic unit fleet. And Montgomery Fire has reduced its response time from the fire station to the emergency scene to less than four minutes to be approximately three minutes and fifty-three seconds for fire suppression and three minutes and fifty-four seconds for EMS calls. The National Fire Protection Administration recommends a four-minute response time, which Montgomery Fire Rescue clearly exceeds. Chief Jordan, please join me as we present a token of our appreciation to you. Our community is extremely grateful for your leadership, not just as a chief, but also for your thirty-nine-year career. And as a token of our appreciation, I would like to present you with this proclamation to show our profound appreciation for your leadership, dedication, and commitment, not only to Montgomery, uh, but also to Montgomery Fire and Rescue and the state and the fire and rescue profession itself. So on behalf of us, congratulations.
Hey, it's been an honor to serve the citizens of Montgomery. Very special to me coming out of Lous County, uh, looking for a job. Miss Beard, uh, was one of my, was my daughter cheerleader coach, so she knows me very well from twenty years. But coming out of Lous County, you know, looking for a job, because there's no jobs in Lous County. My goal was to be a captain in Montgomery Fire Rescue after some years, but, um, I think I've heard that you want to make God laugh, tell him your plan. So thank you for allowing me to be your fire chief. Uh, I would definitely want to complete, um, some great things that we have going on and that's serving the citizens of Montgomery. Thanks to the mayor for allowing me to be fire chief, uh, because he has a choice of whether he, I serve or not. And so I appreciate that, and I continue, I want to continue to do a good job for the citizens of Montgomery and bring you the best services out there. My slogan is "Spirit of Excellence." That's the only way to go. You can find it in the Bible, and I think that's, you can't go wrong with that. Thank you again.
Thank you, Chief.
That was not a retirement.
I know. I was lying. I know, we're all going to miss you.
I'm only waiting on, uh, Mr. Mitchell.
Yeah, give it a run. That glare on Chief's head got me smiling.
Cool. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief.
For the one.
Appreciate you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Sam. That was sweet. Thank you.
Now we want to move on to a few other announcements. Clean City Commission, um, well, maybe not. Um, we can do that, too. Um, Montgomery City Council has once again received the prestigious Energy Star certification for the seventh consecutive year. This recognition is a testament to our collective commitment to environmental sustainability and fiscal responsibility. Over the past year, through the diligent efforts of our energy specialist, Dr. Keisha Bailey, the Building and Maintenance Department, and our dedicated city employees, we have achieved significant savings in energy consumption. Since the program's inception, we have saved a remarkable $7,146,250, a twenty-two-point-nine percent reduction, which is significant. In the period from January to November 2023 alone, we accumulated savings of $1,080,000, sorry, $1,080,000 and $965,000, representing a twenty-three-point-three percent decrease. By optimizing our energy use, we have not only reduced our environmental footprint, but also carefully managed taxpayers' dollars. This Energy Star certification is a reflection of our commitment to being a good steward of both our resources, as well as to our community. We are proud of the progress we have made. We will continue to explore innovative ways to conserve energy and protect our planet, and I want to express my sincere gratitude to Dr. Bailey, the Building and Maintenance Department, and all of our city employees who have made this achievement possible. Together, we have demonstrated that sustainability and fiscal responsibility can go hand in hand. So thank you to the community for your support in making our city a beacon of environmental leadership. Now, uh, the Clean City Commission. Yesterday, we launched our anti-litter campaign, uh, something I know that many of you on the council have been, uh, discussing, uh, for many months, if not the last couple of years. And in partnership with Montgomery Clean City Commission, our sanitation trucks now proudly display the message, "Please don't litter," a powerful reminder to our residents. This campaign is not just about enforcing laws, but also about fostering a sense of responsibility, and I want to add a little bit of civic pride as well. We want Montgomery to be clean and beautiful, and that requires the cooperation of all of our residents. While we understand that no one wants to face a fine, littering is an offense. Urging to avoid fines by simply disposing of your trash properly, let's work together to keep our community litter-free and maintain the beauty of our city. And you'll see more in the way of public service announcements and other things, just trying to, uh, encourage residents and those that work here but may live elsewhere, uh, to help keep Montgomery clean and to make sure they're doing their part, um, to pass that message along to others. And we think by assisting in this with the work that so many on the Clean City Commission do, volunteering their time, um, a lot of our team across this entire community and residents, as well as the sanitation department, we can start to foster that level of civic pride here in our city. So I wanted to say thank you to everyone, thank you to the council for, again, funding, uh, the Clean City Commission again, and thank everybody for the work that they do as a part of that. Um, now we'll move on to some more, uh, good news. We highlighted some of this today, uh, with seventy-fourth year of the Blue Gray Tennis Tournament Classic. We will, uh, be celebrating not only just this awesome tournament, but, uh, the volunteers, the sponsors, and so many, uh, who've come to be a part of this, as well as the families that host the young people, um, that are the young athletes who are involved in this from several colleges. Now, I'll list a few of those in just a second. But I also wanted to give a, a highlight to the council, uh, because through our Montgomery Forward Initiative, as well as our general fund, um, we have enhanced our tennis facilities at Lagoon Park and O'Connor Tennis, investing over $500,000. Uh, significant improvements have included resurfacing of fifteen of thirty tennis courts at both sites, uh, replacing the fencing, uh, upgrading the bathroom and locker room facilities at Lagoon, and purchasing new furniture. Uh, additionally, city crews have been hard at work, uh, pressure washing both sites, replacing lighting, painting, installing new landscaping, putting new signage and branding in place, and generally making sure that Montgomery, uh, is represented, uh, the best way that we can be. We are approximately halfway finished with this project, but by the time, but by this time next year, all thirty courts will be resurfaced, and we will have completed the bathroom and locker room upgrades at O'Connor Tennis Facility, as well as adding more fencing and more refurbishments. So Counsel Johnson, I want to thank you for your advocacy on this and for others who have been pressing forward. Counsel Grimes, we missed you a little bit earlier today around Lagoon Park, but we thank you, and we're glad that, uh, Counsel Beard was there, uh, to join us. But we also want to make note again, for the community's sake, this is part of an overall strategy to improve our sports and recreational facilities. So whether it's trails, or whether it's Crampton Bowl, Buddy Watson Park, the Emory Farmer Soccer Complex, every investment we make in our sports facilities, uh, from tennis courts to soccer fields, is an investment in the future of Montgomery. These facilities create opportunities for our young people to develop their talents, build character, and embrace the values of teamwork and sportsmanship. And this weekend alone, we will host, uh, this Blue Gray Tennis Tournament, which will be taking place, again, featuring eight teams from Alabama, Auburn, Boise State, Michigan State, Middle Tennessee, Old Dominion, Princeton, Rice, Furman, Illinois, Texas Tech, Tulsa, Wake Forest, and Yale. That's both men's and women's tennis teams. And so again, we want to say thank you to everyone who's been involved in this, all the volunteers, again, the board, the sponsors, everyone who participates in it, and we certainly want to thank all of our city employees who have helped really bring this, uh, together in a, uh, really speedy amount of time, given, uh, the window that they had, and it looks fantastic. And so if you haven't been, uh, we encourage you to go. And if you haven't been to a tennis tournament, uh, you don't have to go to the U.S. Open or Wimbledon, uh, or any of those things, you have a tennis tournament right here in your very backyard, and we encourage each and every resident, not just in Montgomery, but throughout central Alabama and beyond, uh, to come out and support, uh, these awesome athletes. I think you'll really, really enjoy it. Uh, now moving to our, um, last announcement before getting to the financial summary. The Alabama Association of Chiefs of Police Conference is taking place right here, uh, in our city. This conference brings together an exceptional group of individuals, local, state, and federal law enforcement chiefs, shares, and other law enforcement partners. This year's conference will feature a remarkable gathering of approximately four hundred individuals who possess a wealth of knowledge and expertise in the field of law enforcement. One highlight of this conference is the presence of nearly seventy-five vendors who will be showcasing the latest advancements in technology. This provides an opportunity for our law enforcement agencies to stay up to date with the latest tools and technologies to better serve and protect our residents and communities. In addition to providing educational networking opportunities, the Montgomery Police Department will be hosting a dinner, which I believe is tonight, at the Train Shed, uh, just a few blocks from here. This dinner will feature exhibits, good food, and ample networking opportunities, and it's through these partnerships that we can come together as a community to support our law enforcement agencies and express our gratitude, uh, to those professionals who put their life on the line each and every day. I'm proud that Montgomery has been chosen as a whole city, uh, for this conference, and we look forward to continued collaboration and excellence in law enforcement. Now we'll move on to the executive summary. Wait a minute. All right. Hey, Mr. President, now that, that's out of order.
Mayor, Mayor. While it's up there, uh, Counselor Johnson wanted to lead us in a happy birthday to our Montgomery Mayor, Stephen Reed. Ms. Johnson?
Uh, listen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna find out. It's gonna take me long. It's gonna take me long, Mr. President, to find out. They got me on this.
Happy birthday to you.
Or you can join in.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mary. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. No better place I'd rather be than City Council to celebrate my birthday. Couldn't think of any place better. Uh, but no, thank you, and I'll, I'll find out who the culprit was on, on the staff. Uh, they, they, they got me on that one. All right, um, now, now let me get back to the business. Um, thank you all. Y'all sounded pretty good, too. Um, now to the executive summary. Uh, we want to first point out, uh, sales and, and use tax, uh, revenue, which is still showing, uh, positive growth. We're grateful for that. Uh, that is cause to, uh, celebrate. Uh, the revenue source was slightly over six percent compared to the same period in the previous fiscal year. Uh, revenue from sales and use tax increased in January more than four percent over the same period in fiscal year 2023. Uh, the chief financial officer monitors events that could adversely affect all the city's revenue sources. However, sales and use tax revenue is closely monitored since it constitutes fifty percent of the city's general fund operating budget. Forecasters are seeing indicators that may reflect sales and use tax revenue growth stalling or slowing down in the current year. One of those indicators is that people are not spending as much as they did in previous years. This revenue source is expected to continue to grow, but not at the same pace as it did in the previous three-year period. Uh, that means we're gonna have to adjust a little bit, uh, in this budget cycle, and we'll talk about that in the months ahead. The lodging tax revenue was flat for the month of January. Uh, revenue reported in January is collected in the previous month. Apparently, uh, we didn't have as much travel, uh, as much as in December, in, in December, and therefore not as many people staying in local hotels. Year-over-year lodging tax revenue is nearly two percent more than the same period in FY 2023, and considering the projected growth in tourism this year, I can only anticipate that the lodging tax revenue will rebound in the coming months. Now, to the gasoline tax, um, this revenue declined in January nearly eight percent. Year-over-year gasoline tax revenue has declined nearly five percent. Many of your families, um, not just yours, but mine as well, didn't travel as much in December, uh, as much as we did, uh, in the previous months. Uh, many, uh, like, uh, us, spent most of the holidays at home. But with spring break on the horizon and the weather getting warmer, I anticipate that this revenue stream will improve before the end of the fiscal year. Now, to the alcoholic beverage tax revenue, which had a significant decrease of nearly nine percent compared to the same period in the previous year. Overall, year-over-year, the alcoholic beverage tax revenue still has declined more than two percent, or which equates to less than $22,000 compared to the same period in FY 2023. Um, I don't understand why people are drinking less. Do y'all? So drink more, just don't drive when you drink. Uh, however, it is obvious, because distributors are reporting less alcoholic tax revenue, which means that their sales have declined as well, so it's not just us, uh, here in Montgomery. Uh, I'll provide an income statement of fiscal year and projections. Uh, after collections for February, I'll post it in March. Uh, and this information will reflect how revenue and expenditures are both trending as we get closer to the end of the year. Um, with that, that will conclude, um, my executive summary. I would like to ask for those, um, from the Blue Gray Tennis Tournament, uh, they would please come up so we can present this proclamation to you, which we highlighted. Again, a lot of the Blue Gray Tennis Tournament, if you would, just maybe bring some brief remarks to the council so we can, uh, make sure we grab a picture with them, and we'll turn it back over to the president to continue the meetings.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Kimberly Matthews with the Blue Gray Tennis Tournament, and this is A.J. Holmes. He's one of our board members, and the first thing I want to say is thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mayor Reed, the city council, and specifically the city parks and recreation department, Ed and David Card, have done an incredible job with this amount of money, getting that place looking like a world-class facility. Montgomery needs a world-class tennis facility because we're gonna have world-class athletes in Montgomery, Alabama this weekend.
I want y'all to come. You don't have to announce a place in it. You just need to be a sports fan to appreciate the athleticism that's gonna be going on this weekend.
It starts Friday morning at nine a.m. We will play all day long at Lagoon, and then Saturday morning, we have a kids' festival for children ten and under. It's free. It's free all weekend. We have free Blue Bell ice cream. And I want you to come out there and support these athletes that in the next few years you will see on TV at Wimbledon, you will see at the French Open. There's two-hundred-and-fifty athletes that come, and, and Mayor, we're gonna help you with that sales tax revenue. We've got people staying in hotels. That's where the coaches and the trainers stay, and a lot of families come down. Instead of traveling all over the country to see their athletes, they are coming to see their kids play at the Blue Gray Tournament. Our families that are hosting these athletes in their homes, they're spending their money on food. They're taking them to eat at restaurants. So I want to come back and see you all for a wrap-up meeting in April and let you know what we did to impact this tournament. Your efforts are greatly appreciated. We want to keep this here in Montgomery. It's our seventy-fourth year, and the seventy-fifth year is gonna be even bigger and better than this year. Lagoon looks amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What time do you start on Saturday?
Nine a.m.
Do you still be asleep?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. President, thank you so much. Turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Uh, Counselor invited Mr. Arthur Watts from MPS to come up and speak with us about the upcoming, uh, tax, renewal tax referendum.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Our honorable mayor, members of this city council. First, let me thank you all for all the hard work that you do, um, in maintaining our beautiful, beautiful city. So thank you for all of the work that you do. Mr. President, I'd just like to speak, uh, just briefly about a tax renewal that will be on the ballot on March 5th of 2024. The key word, Mr. President, is that this is a tax renewal. It is not a new tax. This tax has been around over the last four decades, over the last forty years. It's a 3.5-mill tax that supports the Montgomery Public School District and generate approximately eleven million dollars a year for our school district. So it would not be any increase, that won't be one red penny of increase on an individual's tax bill. So what does this tax allow us to do? It helps us to support our teachers. Um, instead of having overcrowded classrooms, we will, we provided the opportunity, uh, to have more individualized attention for our students. It also supports our support staff, whether it be maintenance, our custodians, security guards, uh, secretaries, bookkeepers, who provide assistance in our maintaining those particular employees. These funds also support our social and emotional supports and mental health. As you know, Mr. President, uh, so many of our students come from very, very challenging backgrounds, and so we want to continue to provide these particular supports for our students. These dollars also help support extracurricular activities, um, extended day after-school tutoring for our students. These are things that we, we must continue to do for our students. Also, professional development for our teachers and our support staff, the maintenance and maintaining of our facilities. We certainly want to keep our facilities both clean, safe, and secure for our students. Teaching materials and supplies, student transportation, uh, right now, the state funds us about seventy-eight percent of what is needed to transport our students to and from school. So we utilize these funds to help support our transportation program. Also, various security measures. We want to ensure that we have the, the appropriate security infrastructure in place to keep our students safe. Also STEM courses and robotics programs, so it, it is assist us with an array of programs that we need to continue to maintain, Mr. President. Again, it generates about eleven million dollars for Montgomery Public Schools, about one-point-two million dollars for Pike Road Schools. So it'll be a, a really, really, really devastating effect, um, if we were to, uh, if we were to, uh, lose this particular tax. Again, it's not a new tax, and I want to continue to stress that. It is not a new tax. So I ask everyone, everyone, to please come out on March the, uh, 5th to support the 3.5-mill envelope tax to support our students. We have to do this, Mr. Mayor, for our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Appreciate you coming out and making that presentation to the council.
Quick question for you.
Mr. Andrew Smith?
Mayor, do we have a public awareness campaign scheduled for this ballot measure? Because I want to make sure that people know, just as was noted, this is not a new tax. This is just a renewal of something that's existing, and if there are any graphics or documents that we can help to get that word out, we'd like to have those sent over.
Thank you. Ms. Watts, you want to address that?
Thank you so much. Yes, there is a campaign, and we'll be, we'll be providing additional information to both the mayor and to the council. We have a number of events that are coming up as well, and we'll let you all know about that as well. Thank you so much. Thanks for the support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do you still, Ms. Matthews, she already been here?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, any special committee to report? All right. We have no public communication. All right, Madam Clerk, first.
Mr. President, item one, review of capital food and liquor store at 3839 Court Street
not a new tax, and I want to continue to stress that. It is not a new tax. So I ask everyone, everyone to please come out on March the, uh, fifth to support the three-point-five-mil envelope tax to support our students. We have to do this, Mr. Mayor, for our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Appreciate you coming out and making that presentation to the council.
Quick question for you.
Mr. Andrew Semensky.
Mayor, do we have a public awareness campaign scheduled for this ballot measure? Because I want to make sure that people know, just as was noted, this is not a new tax. This is just a renewal of something that's existing. And if there are any graphics or documents that we can help to get that word out, we'd like to have those sent over.
Thank you. Ms. Watts, you want to address that? Thank you so much. Yes, there is a campaign, and we'll be, we'll be providing additional information to both the mayor and to the council. We have a number of events that are coming up as well, and we'll let you all know about that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you still, Ms. Matthews, you see her?
Yes, uh-huh.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, any special committee to report?
All right.
We have no public communication. All right, Madam Clerk, person.
Mr. President, item one, review of Capital Food and Liquor Store, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, Court Street, South.
All right, Mrs. Semensky, uh, Mr. Mohammed Hassan.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Mr. Semensky.
Name for the record.
Mohammed Hassan, Capital Food and Liquor Store.
Thank you for coming in today. Uh, we've been getting, uh, I've been getting an overwhelming number of calls from residents in the area about the business there, the fact that we've got, uh, people consuming alcohol right outside the business, loud music, multiple disturbances, parking lot parties. We've had some incidences that have gotten more serious recently. Um, had some shots fired, one that went into a building for a youth after-school program through the front door of theirs. We've got to clean that parking lot up. It's a, it, let me, let me just, there's a, a couple of major kind of key points. The reason I wanted you to come in and discuss this is because I've got some residents here too that, that are really concerned about the activity that's happening there. There's a grocery store right down, uh, the same strip mall that y'all are in. There's the True Value. People go, just want to get some hardware. And so, uh, wanted you all to come in because we've got to figure out either a plan going forward, or we're gonna have to talk about a more serious conversation. Um, a few things that I would like to see out there. Number one is the loitering. I drove by today at two o'clock this afternoon, six people out front, consuming alcohol. They had a boombox outside, playing music in the parking lot. The other day, I was there with, uh, doing a walkthrough with, uh, some of the neighborhood leaders, Montgomery Police Officer with me. We tried to break up a group of six, came back half an hour later, there was fifteen. So when those people are gathering out front, uh, first off, we've got to stop the loitering, and I need you all to start calling those in to make sure that we don't have people hanging out, drinking, consuming alcohol, doing whatever else out there. It's causing a major trash program, problem. So we've got to get that trash cleaned up out front in front of the business as well. And I don't know this to be, I've had some people send me pictures, but I'm pretty sure you've got some kind of gambling machines inside the business as well. Uh, do you all have any cameras inside the business or outside the business?
Yes, sir.
You do? Are they tied into the Montgomery Star Watch system?
Uh, not outside. I got a camera inside.
Okay. We'd like to put you, have you add one to the outside and tie those into the Montgomery, uh, Star Watch program. I'll make sure that I get you that information to tell you how you can do that. The other thing that we're gonna do is have you come back in sixty days and see if the calls have stopped, uh, out at that property. Um, I saw that y'all are in charge of leasing the other spaces. It says up in the window that, so I take it you're kind of the property manager for the entire property. And in the past six months, I've gotten almost, there's almost fifty calls on your call log there. So this ha- this, this has to stop, and it seems to be stemming from the alcohol that's being sold outside your business.
We have there like, uh, almost twenty years, twenty years, but, uh,
Sir, step, step to the mic and state your name for the record.
We try to get rid of this thing, but, uh,
Sir.
every time.
Your name for the record, please?
My first name is M.D., last name is Roman, and I worked there since a long time. So we call like police officer, every time we call the police officer, when they come, they leave with a second. When they see the police cars, they leave, and when the police officer leave, they just come back. So we are tired of the thing, and suddenly a big thing happened inside the store. After that, we are really scared, and we don't, we don't like to do anymore. Pretty soon, we will close the liquor store.
Well, here's what I need you to do. Next time that they come back, I need you guys to talk to NPD about trespassing them so that they can come in and actually remove them from the property, okay? So-
We, we tried to do stop a lot of times, but we can do nothing. So, you know, we, we talked to the police officer, what can we do? They say, you have to go to the court. We, sometimes we came, but still, they come back within a second.
Mr. President.
They come back within a second. Finally, we decided we'll close the liquor store. We'll make it a, like a grocery store, but no liquor, no alcohol, no tobacco. So pretty soon, maybe within a month, we'll close the liquor store like that. So we'll, we'll open new business.
Mr. President, can I say something, please?
We're really scared, you know, after this happens, we are really scared. So we stopped, we decided we will stop within a month.
Ms. Robb?
Ms. Robb?
Um, I've been working with, um, Mr. Andrew on this situation. In these days, I've stepped in your store to ask you about cleaning it up, and you've told me that's none of, you have nothing to do with that. You don't care about that outside. And I'm stating it to you right here and now, because I have stepped in that store and talked to you all about this before. Um, and my understanding is, you got to care. If we care about our communities, we need you to care about our stores and our people if you want us to patronize what we're doing in your area. We're trying to get that area cleaned up and looking decent and in order. And Andrew is rolling by there. I've ridden by there. We have communicated with each other on this on several times of coming in because our district intertwines with each other, so we work together. So this is one thing he's asking, why not security on the outside of your store? Have you hired security to work out there?
All right, Major Rucker, you want to speak on this issue?
Yes, sir. Uh, it should be noted, there's an upcoming event here in March, um, you know, yearly, we do the Duce Comraz event yearly. Uh, it should be noted that, uh, I went to the store, person talked to the owner. At one point in time, he was charging rent for spaces in front of his business for that event, and the event wasn't even held in that area.
Wow.
Yeah.
He didn't need clothes.
I mean, we've got-
We closed down clothes for, for less.
Yeah.
At that moment, I have no idea what is the rule. And when the police officer came in and talked to me, and I told them, I'm really sorry, I don't know the rule, and I stopped them.
Actually, when we went to the business to talk to him, there was an actual fight outside the business, because they were, they were upset because they paid him money to rent spaces, and they were told they could not have this event in a parking lot. And there was a fight due to the fact that he took the money from the occupants.
Yeah. So, life for you all, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, yeah.
Mr. President.
Mr. Pruitt.
I'd like to help, uh, Mr. Semensky. I'd like to see thirty days, and I'd also like for Mr. Semensky to see a report in the next thirty days. We have done it before from NPD. Certain hours, we ride by there that y'all witnessed, Major Rucker, in the parking lot. Can we get that to Mr. Semensky?
Yes, sir.
What was the request for?
Say it again.
What was the, what was the-
Thirty days, we're doing, uh, getting the reports from, uh, the reviews by NPD. Security.
Thirty days, okay. Yes.
Security. We'd like, we need you to either hire some private security, have somebody out front, be willing to call some trespassing, you know, on these individuals that won't leave you alone, okay? This, this, it's too much. It's way too much, okay?
But I want to clean also, sir, but I am tired of them, you know, keep calling, keep calling the Montgomery Police Department.
We're shining a spotlight on it right now, okay? So-
Major Rucker, can you explain to them, when we get finished, how to sign a trespassing warrant?
Yes, sir.
And how that, how that works? If you sign a trespassing warrant, he's gonna explain to you. They can take him and put him in jail.
Okay, sir.
And he's gonna explain it to you.
Mr. President, uh, while we have him, Mr. Semensky, uh, gentlemen, it sounds like it is a lot of illegal activity going on outside of your business and from you as business owners and operators. We have done so many things in the city with other businesses, and you're getting a pass. You're getting thirty days. When it comes to your business, from your business door, out inside to the street, it should be cleaned. You shouldn't have loitering. Charging people for the parking lot is illegal. I'm gonna move to ask that you get closed down, your business license get revoked, if you don't appease what the councilman is asking in your district. Because I've heard numerous times when we, in other years, everything that's happened out there, from shooting to people getting shot, and you say that it's not your responsibility, but I've seen time and time again, since I've been on the council, it's not other businesses' responsibility either, but we've closed their doors. So in thirty days, gentlemen, if that business is not cleaned outside, and if you don't have security, and if you're not hooked up with the security's watch, Star Watch, you should be closed. And I'll ask heavily that the council move with me to close your doors, because you are actually being a menace to the community and you're a nuisance to the community. As we try to build Montgomery forward, this is a problem, and we shouldn't allow you to do it, just like we don't allow anyone else to do it in the city of Montgomery.
Mr. President.
Ms. Beard.
Do you have, do you have security cameras at your business?
Yes, ma'am.
Are they hooked up to Star Watch?
No.
Okay.
He got them on the inside, not the outside.
You have them on the inside and not outside?
Yeah, I have it inside, not outside.
Not outside. Okay, thank you.
I have a one on the, I can see on the lawn, not the parking lot, ma'am.
No.
Mr. Semensky.
I'm good. Thirty days?
All right, sir, you got thirty days, a review, uh, get with Major Rucker, and talk to you about what you need to do. Thank you, Mr. Mohammed.
Thank you, Major Rucker.
Mr. Semensky, do you want them to come back within thirty days or in six months?
No, no, thirty days.
Come back in thirty days, okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item two, review of King West End at forty-one thirty-five Troy Highway.
Ms. Mitch, representative for Key West End here in the audience.
Mr. President.
Ms. Mitch.
I, I think we were kind of figured out who were the owners, Ms. Ms. Blalock, did we ever get?
No, we didn't get anything clear on them, no, sir. I sent, I just sent a generic letter to who was on the business license, and it was just the Key and, uh, Key West End.
Mr. President, can I carry this?
Yes.
This over two weeks.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Carry it over to the next meeting, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Item three, resolution, repealing resolution number seven dash twenty-two four.
All right, council, need a motion. Who's been the rules?
Who's been the rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item four, ordinance authorizing the issuance, execution, sale, and delivery of and not to exceed twelve million principal amount, GO warrant, series twenty-two four A.
All right, need most of the rules? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted. Item five, application for a towing company by Bedford Green, doing business as LGI Towing, twenty-four eighty Alabama River Parkway.
All right, Representative Bedford, Mr. Green, LGI Towing, please come forward. State your name for the record, sir.
Bedford Green.
All right, any question for Mr. Green?
Yes, Mr. President.
No.
Mr. Green, uh, how far away from the street are you in your, in your building? Where you, is it pushed back? How many feet away from the street?
Uh, at least probably fifty feet.
You have a gate up?
Yes.
Is it a, what kind of gate is it? Is it a wooden fence or?
Ch- uh,
Chain link?
Chain link fence.
So my issue with this is, Mr. Green, we, we just paved that street. We've put up some cameras on that street, and we're really trying to change what it looks like when you enter into Montgomery. And we are the gateway to that in North Montgomery. And if I want to move forward with opening it, because we're about to put, uh, driveway and entryway into a community right across the street, it would, you have to conceal where you're towing the cars and placing them. Like, I don't, I shouldn't be able to ride past, which I do every day, and see any cars or any trash outside of your location and where your property is. So if you're pushed back fifty feet, I would ask that you do a fencing and show me the proof that you're doing fencing to conceal those cars before I approve this.
Yes, we do have a fence.
But I can see through it. I can still see all the cars. I don't want to see it.
Okay.
And if, when you do that, I'll move forward. I just need you to conceal the cars. Because if I say yes now, you probably take forever to put that fence up. And I know you can afford a fence right now. So I just ask that you put the fence up, even if you put it up. Just show me that you're gonna put the fence up, just to cover that when we ride past on Alabama River Parkway.
Okay.
And then, just call me. Um, you can find my number very easily, or I, or I can get your number off this app, and I'll text you, so you'll have my number. I'll ride past, and I'll see it, and then we'll put it back on the agenda.
So you're gonna carry it over?
I'm gonna carry it over.
All right, item five, be carried over.
Thank you.
Are you carrying over to the next meeting or tabling indefinitely?
Uh, give, give me two meetings. Can we do two meetings? Carrying over for two meetings?
Carried over.
Thirty days.
Yes, okay. Two meetings. Okay. Item six, application for a towing company by Michael W. Taylor, doing business as Taylor Automotive and Towing, twenty-three fifty-one Lower Tonka Road.
Uh, Representative for, uh, Taylor Automotive and Towing, please come forward.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Michael Taylor. All right.
Mr. President.
Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Taylor, I know you just heard me speak to the gentleman on Alabama River Parkway. Lower Tonka Road is no different. You know what it looked like when you ride down Lower Tonka Road.
What, the Lower Tonka Road?
Yes. It is a eyesore, and I don't want any additional. We just created the envision twenty-fourty. We're trying to build Montgomery forward, and I already have a town with the Savage Yards on Lower Tonka Road, and that is downtown Montgomery. So I do not want to move forward with this.
Uh, all we do is AAA. We do not impound cars. We're just the AAA provider for Montgomery.
And is this the yard that's right across from Newtown?
I'm sorry, it's hard hearing this equator.
Is this the yard that's right across from Newtown?
It's from, uh, my dog or?
That's my dog, that's what I thought. And you have a lot of cars in there already?
Uh, there's four cars there, but they're, uh, we do, we do not do impounds.
So?
We, we just do roadside assistance, just AAA work. That's all we do.
So do you have to call yourself a towing company?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
So do you have to label yourself as a towing company? Because when I see towing company, I see that you're gonna call, you're gonna hold some more cars. So instead of four, in two weeks, I'll see eight. In the next two weeks, I'll see twelve.
Uh, no, ma'am, that's not true. Uh, we just, we're just roadside assistance.
I'm gonna carry it over, Ms. Blalock, Mr. President. I just want to go by and see.
I'd be glad to, uh, meet you there at any time and show you, uh, this is, I got the AAA contract here with me, you know, uh, that's all we do is AAA. I'm the second largest AAA provider in Alabama. I take care of Pelham and Alabaster, and they gave me a contract for Montgomery.
Yes, sir. Not denying the work that you do. I appreciate the work that you do, but I'm trying to clean up Lower Tonka Road, so I need to see it with my eyes.
I, I think we cleaned it up a lot from when we took over the previous, uh, tenant. It was a mess, and, uh, and I've done a lot of, uh, improvements, and I've got more to do.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna carry you over for just two weeks, man.
Mr. President, I got a quick question.
Mr. Andrew.
Is there not a way to designate in the business license application, if they're not doing impounds, why they're being classified as a towing company?
That's a great question, Mr. Semensky.
Very good question.
Someone from the license division come forward, please.
Mr. President.
Ms. Mitch.
And we, we did a, we did an ordinance that we, they are primarily, um, up here in front of us if they are doing repo. Um, this was the, we, we just started this, if they was a repo company, um, because, or repo or recovery. And that's what we did, that ordinance. I brought that ordinance in front of the council, and so they was coming in front of us because we have so many companies from out of, out of, out of state, um, that's not in the city of Montgomery, that's able to come in and repo individuals' cars. Those individuals are not able to find their cars because that, that company is not here in the city of Montgomery. Sometimes these pawn shops and these, uh, title places use out of state. So this was a method to come in here and let these individuals, let us know that they're repoing, uh, what's their process of repoing, and so we can get a grip on these individuals that's operating outside of having a, a, a business license. So that was the purpose of the ordinance that we passed. So this is the first time that we, we are doing this because we wanted to get a control on those repo and those recovery. So that is the reason that they're in front of us today.
Okay. Uh, ma'am, come on. Andrew, state your question again.
I was trying to figure out, you know, obviously, the gentleman here is, uh, a AAA and a roadside assistance service provider, not repo, not towing,
Right.
not impounding.
No, I don't have any relationship with any police department, sheriff's department, or anything like that.
So what I'm wondering is, in the spirit of the ordinance that was passed to address this issue of repos and impounds, uh, is there not a way that we can know the difference between those
Yeah.
two business activities? This, obviously, you said you're the second or third largest AAA provider.
I'm the second largest AAA provider in Alabama. We do, uh, down at Montgomery is about seventeen hundred, seventeen hundred calls a month for AAA.
I mean, so, I mean, and, and I think that that's obviously a, a demonstrable difference than somebody who's trying to do, uh, some kind of shitty-
Sound picture or something.
Yeah, we have six flatbeds down here, one wheel lift. We have, we have aided the police before, but they've asked us to help when they've seen a truck drive by or whatever, and we've helped with no cost or what have you. But, uh, we just mainly do AAA. And, uh, like I said, seventeen hundred calls a month is the average in Montgomery, and, uh, we service, uh, you know, eighty-five to sixty-five, getting people off the interstates or what have you, with flat tires, flat tire changes, uh, fuel, uh, broken down cars, going from homes to shops and shops to shops, that kind of thing. I do not do any impounding, uh, at all, uh, and I do, I have no relationship with the police department.
So, sir, so if it's broken down, you carry it to a shop?
Right. Uh, you, if you, one of you got AAA up there on the, anybody? So if she calls AAA and gives us her address, we go pick her car up and take it-
No, I don't have any relationship with any police department, sheriff's department or anything like that.
So what I'm wondering is, in the spirit of the ordinance that was passed to address this issue of repos and impounds, uh, is there not a way that we can know the difference between those two business activities? This, obviously, you said you're the second or third largest AAA provider?
I'm the second largest AAA provider in Alabama, we do, uh, down in Montgomery, it's about seventeen hundred, seventeen hundred calls a month for AAA.
I mean, so, I mean, and, and I think that that's obviously a, a demonstrable difference than somebody who's trying to do, uh, some kind of shitty.
Yeah, I picture something, mhm.
Yeah, we have six flatbeds down here, one will live, we have, we have aided the police before, but they've asked us to help when they've seen a truck drive by or whatever, and we've helped with no cost or what have you. But, uh, we just mainly do AAA, and, uh, like I said, seventeen hundred calls a month is the average in Montgomery, and, uh, we service, uh, you know, eighty-five to sixty-five, getting people off the interstates, or what have you, with flat tires, flat tire changes, uh, fuel, uh, broken down cars, going from homes to shops and shops to shops, that kinda thing. I do not do any impounding, uh, at all, uh, and I do, I have no relationship with the police department.
So, sir, so if it's broken down, you carry it to a shop?
Right, uh, you, if you, one of you got AAA up there on the, anybody? So if she calls AAA and gives us her address, we'll go pick her car up and take it to Graze or wherever she chooses, and that's, then the job's done.
So what's the length of time that a car usually sits on your lot?
There, there's four cars on my lot right now, I'm not gonna lie to you, two of them are AAA members that disappeared after we picked their car up. I'm working on trying to find a resolution to get rid of those two cars, the two on the right. The other two have been there for a long time, I've gotta get rid of them, but I haven't added other than those two AAA cars. We picked up, the, the cars can't contact the customer, and they just disappeared, and, uh, the, the place we were taking them didn't want the cars, so we're, we're stuck with the cars until I come up with some, you know, resolution to get rid of them.
And, and that's what I'm afraid of, and, and when I look at your application, it says the nature of business, towing, it does say it's AAA in parentheses, but it does say nature of business, towing, and nature of business and use of this location, towing. And what has happened over the years is things start like that and they end up totally different.
Well, I've been doing it since two thousand thirteen, I started off in, uh, uh, Harpersville, Westover area, and, uh, AAA gave me the, uh, Alabaster Pelham area, which is probably more population than the city of Montgomery, if you think about it, uh, all there, and then they offered, uh, Montgomery to me. And, uh, we do twenty-five hundred calls a month statewide, and we, I don't have any relationship with any police departments, we'll help them out if they ask, but they don't call us. We're not on rotation, I'm not like Siemens, Recker or any of the other companies around here. And, uh, I am the only one with the AAA contract, there's no one else sharing it with me. So if anyone up here has AAA and you call, uh, AAA, they're gonna call me.
Okay, do you live here locally?
I live in Wilsonville, Alabama, ma'am, I'm down here three times a week, and I'm up there the other three times a week. I have, uh, fifteen trucks, half up there and half down here.
Okay, and so, and you store them on the lot as well?
Ma'am?
You store them at the location?
Uh, I let the guy, we had the catalytic converter stuff cut off, all my trucks are new too, I don't know if y'all have seen them around town, the Taylor Automotive trucks, they're all new trucks, they're not junky trucks at all.
Mhm.
But I let them drive them home because I'm scared to death of getting catalytic converters cut off of them.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Uh, Mr. Blalock, we gonna carry it over two weeks, I'ma stop by and see Mr. Um.
Michael.
Taylor, um, or whoever you have on site, I'd love to talk with you.
Mike Taylor, I'm the owner, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Would you, uh?
I got your number on here, uh.
Can I ask you which number you have there?
Come to the side, I'll show y'all when I say it out.
I don't care, they call it all the time anyway.
It's a six zero one number?
Yeah, six oh three nine one two eight.
Yep, the mobile number is on there.
That's my personal number, six oh three nine one two.
Okay, got it, I got it, okay, I'll call you tomorrow.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, clerk.
Item seven, application.
Ms. Blalock.
Ms. Blalock, go ahead, Ms. Mitch.
Mr. Zeminski brought up a, a, a question he wanted to address.
Is there a way to clean, I mean, we've gotta figure out a way to clean that up a little bit, though, so that we're not getting towing and service calls, especially now if we may be out of no AAA coverage in the city of Montgomery for two weeks? Let's try and avoid that.
Well, he said they take the cars home, and he only has four there, and this is just for the location, and I, I think we can stay in two weeks if they got it.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, that's why I'm saying, I just think the next time that, that comes up, that first.
As far as the classification of business?
Yeah.
I agree. Um, and is licensed, ma'am, can you come back up here for license?
Cause you didn't get your question answered, right?
Yes, she did not, no. For the classification for business, i.e. for what he stood up here for, i- it was towing, but he's not a towing company, he's AAA, so the question is, what is another classification that he can hold when he's filling out his application for business that he should put on here? Cause I, in honesty, he needs a new application, cause he's not a towing company, cause if I see this coming on Lower Tunka Road, it's gonna be a no. So if he's not, he's not a towing, he doesn't even store his trucks on site, so it needs to be another classification. And what is that, or do you need to look it up?
That's my knowledge, it would be a service, he would be doing a service.
And when, so when he says nature of business, he has AAA, and, um, I guess the U classification is still towing and automotive? With the, um, occupancy classification, it's a U.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
So that's towing and automotive? So is there another classification he can use?
A service, he would be doing a service.
Okay, so when I call him tomorrow, I'm gonna ask him to come back to see you to do this again, so that way he's not held up in the same situation as a towing company.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Ms. Johnson, I think, he, the company is a towing company, but the issue that I think you're having is you don't wanna have what we call storage at that location. He is a towing company.
I don't even have storage rates listed there, cause I don't store, now, every once in a while we'll pick up an enterprise car for, that goes to the airport over there, they're closed, we have to store it overnight, we take it the next morning. I wanna, uh, clarify the name of the company, Taylor Automotive and Towing, I do own a auto repair shop, tire shop in, near Chelsea. And that's in the name, and it's the same business there as this here, the name, uh, I, I don't have two businesses, just one. So I do own a, a auto repair shop and tire shop.
Ms. Mitch.
Mr. President, um, Ms. Blalock, I, I'm trying to remember that ordinance off the top of my head, so that ordinance, um, tried to distinguish between a towing, a repo and a, a recovery company, right? And the only reason they was coming in front of us, um, and it was, everybody was grandfathered in, if they was coming as a repo or recovery company, they had to come in front of us to, um, get approval for a license, correct? Do you remember that ordinance?
I believe towing. I would have to look at the definition and the weather.
I believe it was towing also.
It was towing also?
I think so too. Because they wanted to make the difference, because people are doing towing, recovering, they say they're not doing all that, I think that's why they, um, coming before you.
So, so right now, we haven't had any other towing companies come in front of us outside of two, so it shouldn't be anybody in the city of Montgomery towing at this time, cause they don't have a license, correct?
With the new ones, I'm not sure about the, um, ones already established.
This your first time getting a, a business license?
Yes, sir, I was, uh, I took over for Signature Towing that was here before with AAA, they, AAA basically fired them. I ran the trucks down here and did the AAA duties, I'm here full-time now, I need to get a business license.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Mitch, um, ma'am, so, um, can we do like a queue on here so there is no storage at all?
Yes, ma'am.
Beyond five days, cause like you got the four cars now, I don't know how long they been there, but.
I can get rid of them, but, but the, uh, like I said, I gave a good example, Enterprise, they close, sometimes they close at eight over there at the airport, sometimes they close at nine, sometimes they close at ten. Call comes in, we gotta go get an Enterprise car that's broken down, we go there, they're closed, I gotta do something with the car, I'll put it on my lot, have one of my guys take it next morning.
Okay, so can he come see you and do that tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do that tomorrow, give me a call when it's done, and we'll put it back on the agenda.
No, I'm supposed to see you tomorrow?
Um, Teresa.
Yes, ma'am, in, in the same office, uh?
Yes, I'm in the back, but yes, ma'am, yes, sir, I'm there.
Okay.
Okay, and you can set that up with her, and, and so we'll still do it, but it's just changing, just changing and adding a queue for no storage, and then it'll be good. So I cannot pass it in this current state, but once it's adjusted, we'll pass it.
What time would you like me to come?
I'll give him a call.
Mr. President.
Ms. Mitch.
Um, I, 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 um, respect the, the, um, counselor, um, Johnson, but when we saying no storage on this, these small business, and we not saying no storage on these big business, cause you have several big business that, that, and he might have, the other guy might have a mechanic shop. So when you say no storage, I think they're hurting our small business, I mean, I could, you could say clean it up, or you can say, but to say actually no storage on somebody that might have a mechanic shop that's getting their car towed, you have Don Duckem, that have, you have Gibson tires, are we gonna do that on every individual saying that, hey, you cannot have any storage there? I don't mind them cleaning it up, but when you say, hey, absolutely no storage, I think that you are hurting the small business.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mitchell, and no, for the other gentleman, I don't, I, cause that's what he's doing, he's doing the savage yard, so I just want him to conceal it. If not, so I didn't say no storage, just to conceal it.
And I guess that's, that's, that, Mr. President?
Ms. Mitch.
And if you, if we say no savage, I, I agree totally, if you say they shouldn't have a, a savage yard, I, I am totally, but not to say no storage, but I will, we need to define the word of no storage and no savage, that's the only thing that I ask council.
Alright, ma'am, clerk.
Item seven, application for a restaurant retail liquor license, doing business is Forty-Eight Flavors at sixty-one thirty-four Atlanta Highway.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak for or against this item, please come forward, state your name for the record, I have on the public communication, Mr. Ed Bartarelli. Bartarelli?
Yes, sir.
One, one second, sir, let, your name for the rec.
My name?
Yes, sir.
Kentavious Shuford.
Kentavious Shuford, your name, sir?
David Jones.
Okay, got that, ma'am, clerk. Alright, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak for or against this item, please come forward, Mr.?
That would be me.
Okay, sir.
Mr. President, uh, council, Mr. Mayor, good evening. My name's Ed Bartarelli, I'm a lifelong resident here in Montgomery, uh, in the insurance business, also the appointed commissioner from District One for the Montgomery Housing Authority. That being said, I'm not here in any official capacity, I'm here as a citizen. Uh, these gentlemen, uh, have a lot of admiration for them, I'm here to ask the council to please approve Agenda Item Number Seven, and I will tell you why. The, as the council is probably aware, the address that they're moving into, there has been numerous, uh, instances in the past. These gentlemen have no affiliation with the previous tenants, the, this is a new business, and I think that they have an unfair cloud that has been placed over their head. And I will tell you that, uh, I live in the Stony Brook Division, we have had a business relationship with them for over a year now. Uh, they are just, they're incredible guys, they do work for Hyundai, so I think you need to know the, the caliber of people that you're dealing with. So I, 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 as a community member, I support them, I will support them, I will tell you the residents, where I live, they're looking very forward for them to be open. So I've just asked the council to please give approval to these guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow. Mr. Jimmerick.
Um, I understand you do, you do catering work for the, uh, Hyundai?
Yes.
And then the purpose of your restaurant is to be just an on-site restaurant, I understand you've got, uh, do you have something else that you do on-site, like, uh, food trucks or whatever?
Yeah, we had a food truck, but we actually shut it down until.
You shut it down?
Get this running, and then probably about six more months, we gonna get a new food truck.
So you're inside now, and what kinda food, whatever, you're gonna have in that restaurant?
Um, from eleven to five, we gonna sell like a soul food buffet style, and from five to ten, we gonna go into like a Mosella type menu, and it's gonna be American style food.
Now you close at ten o'clock?
Yes.
Would it be any problem, you being restricted to wine and beer, and no liquor?
Can you say that one more time?
Instead of having hard liquor, you'd only have wine and beer, would that be good, would that hurt your business at all?
Uh, yeah, I don't think many people.
You don't think it'd hurt it at all?
I think, tell me, just having just wine and beer?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd hurt it.
It hurt you?
Yeah, I think more people buy liquor more than wine and beer.
But what, what food you got?
Yeah, with the foods, the type of food.
You got a menu?
And we actually have some menus for y'all to look at also, we ain't trying to promote ourselves, but we, we just want y'all to see that we serious about what.
They're trying to help our alcohol tax sales, too, Thomas.
Alcohol tax, yeah, thank you. So you're gonna close at ten o'clock?
Yes, and you can bring your kids in there at any time.
Okay.
Red Run Bar.
Hey, and old prices are subject to change too, so don't.
Good business line, bro.
Alright, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
I, I have one question, I have one question, if you don't mind, President, you're gonna make sure this does not turn into a club setting, correct?
A hundred and ten percent, and if, I'm telling y'all the story, I want y'all personally to come shut me down.
Thank you, sir.
Please make sure they close at ten o'clock, period.
Okay.
No deviation at all.
Okay.
So if you close at ten, that will solve the issue we had before there.
Okay.
And, uh, then you'll be okay.
Okay.
Let's put in the, in the ordinance that we are in residence, that we, they close at ten o'clock.
Yes, sir.
If they, they stay open later than that, then we got a problem.
Okay.
Alright, Mr. Jimmerick, need a motion?
Make a motion to adopt.
Spending rules?
Spending rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted with.
Thank you for doing business in Montgomery.
Thank you.
Very good.
Good luck.
Item eight, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business is Marathon Food Mart, seven sixty-two South Berry Street.
Alright, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Your name for the record, sir?
Ashish Patel.
Okay.
Mr. President, motion to spend the rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand? Okay, no, no, I gotta close the hearing.
Oh, you had the hearing?
Alright, seeing none, I declare the public hearing has been held in its proper before the council, need a motion?
Motion to spend the rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you for doing business in Montgomery, thank you, sir.
Item nine, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business is Liberty Food Mart, nine oh four West Edgemont Avenue.
Alright, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak for or against this item, please come forward, your name for the record, sir?
Yeah, Ashish Patel.
Alright. Ms. Riley?
Alright, yes, I, I do have issues, I'm going to table this indefinite right now.
Carry it over, you gonna table?
I wanna table it, I wanna table it indefinitely right now.
Okay, you gonna tell him why?
Oh, yeah, I can tell him why, the reason why I wanna table it indefinitely is because you have machines in there, you have a bunch of calls over there of incidents that have happened, you're not taking, you're not taking care of the outside of their premises, those neighbors have been calling me constantly about people out there drinking, walking up and down that street, and you won't do anything about what they're doing, even we have a business located over there that is complaining about all the noise that is coming from there, all of the incidents that are going on over there, so I'm going to table this indefinitely.
Alright. Thank you, sir, she tables, she's not voting on it tonight.
Item ten, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business is Quick Trip, seventy-one seventy-four, at ten thirty-five West South Boulevard.
Mr. Brad Mc. Gubony, Guberry? Alright, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, declare the public hearing has been held in its proper before the council, Ms. Riley?
Sir, you got a gentleman, is he the owner?
Your name for the record, sir?
Yes, sir, and, and, and I, uh, answer to anything, nobody can pronounce it, it's Brad McGiboney.
McGibn?
McGiboney?
McGiboney, okay, okay. A good shot.
And he, is he forward or against it?
I, I think he's representing.
I, I'm representing Quick Trip.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we have had our discussion about this, um, store, um, the things I've asked you to look, talk to the owners about, I'm good with it, I have no problem, long as we take care of what we need to take care of, what we discuss. And that, and that was being that we, um, look at security for the outside, making sure that our people that come to the store are feeling secure being at the store when you are open up, because we need the businesses over there, and I need this place to do really good, cause you're right up by the interstate, so I need all that gas coming in and them tax money. So please just make sure we take care of our citizens over there, and we're looking out for nobody hanging out littering and all that good stuff around in here.
Yes, ma'am, we do, we, we train our, our employees, uh, uh, we have about a three-week program where we train them how to handle, um, no ordering and that kinda thing. Uh, we also have, uh, approximately forty, uh, HD video cameras per location that is monitored twenty-four seven at a centralized location in Tulsa, Oklahoma, to make sure that, uh, you know, somebody's watching it a hundred percent of the time.
Thank you, sir, thank you for investing in that part, thank you. Alright, I declare the public hearing has been held in its proper before the council, Ms. Riley? Need a motion?
Motion to spend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Thank you for investing in Montgomery, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Item eleven, pursuant to section eleven fifty-three B one, Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of unsafe structures at the listed location.
Alright, need a motion, spending rules?
Motion to.
Need a motion to uphold.
Wait, with somebody?
Motion to uphold. Need a motion? Oh, come on up, ma'am, you wanna speak to us on item number eleven?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
They got eighteen fifteen Scribbling Street?
Yes, ma'am.
It's supposed to be eighteen twenty-one Scribbling Street. I don't, we don't have a eighteen fifteen Scribbling Street out there, and we call it pun, our very own punkin town, we don't. So I don't know where the eighteen fifteen came from.
Mr. Tate, someone from Housing Code, please come forward.
Uh, Lucinda Petway.
Miss Petway, that's that corner house that we've been, is that that corner house we've been at?
Yes, on that corner, our house.
Eighteen twenty-one.
Scribbling Street.
The address that we have is eighteen twenty-one?
Okay.
We can check to see if there's some discrepancy in that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright, those corrections that have been made is eighteen twenty-one, need a motion?
Move to uphold.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item twelve, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of public, abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
Move to uphold.
Suspend the rules.
We, okay, suspend it.
Motion to suspend the rules, need a motion?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to uphold.
Motion to adopt.
Adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Alright, Madam Clerk? I'd like to ask for a show cause hearing on Midtown Apartments on... I think it's on Carter Hill Road. Yup.
Okay, I'll have a resolution setting the date for the next meeting, and will you give me the causes that you're doing the show cause for?
Security purposes.
We've gotta have more than that.
Okay, I'll get it for you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Pruitt has a resolution.
Yes, can you read that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, resolution reappointing Laurie Wilt to the museum board.
Move to suspend rule.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Counselor have anything else?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to, um, discuss the Dollar Generals we have in the city. Uh, I, currently, I, I had an opportunity to ride over to Stirbridge Dollar General, and Mr. Mayor, you remember, I was talking about the produce in Dollar Generals? Well, they have produce in Stirbridge, but we have about five within two miles of each other in North Montgomery, and I know we were talking about getting with the distribution center on bringing produce, but I would've thought that our area would've been a pr, higher priority, or even West Montgomery, South Montgomery, for produce rather than in Stirbridge. So I'm really curious on how that happened, and how, how they did it, and how can they get it in our communities? Because if, that, right now, they're making it so saturated that we can't get any other development in our district, so, I mean, we got food deserts, and we want food, and right now, we killing our communities with highly fat saturated food and all this stuff, instead of getting some kind of fruit and something in there, so if we can't have just the current market all day, if we can get that produce inside of our Dollar Generals.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great point, and, uh, I was not aware that they had it in, in the Stirbridge, uh, store, I think we oughta, uh, reach out to the, uh, district manager, uh, and raise that issue with them and see what their proposed solution is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And another question I have, Mr. President, um, I, I recently reached out to Stacy about, um, our city attorney, about doing a moratorium on automated car washes. They are popping up on every corner, and we need to do something about that to stop that from happening. Yeah, we want business in Montgomery, but at some point, we gonna have to have some boundaries, and say, no, okay, that's enough, that's enough Dollar General, that's enough Family Dollar, that is enough of car washes. Because I, I, we deserve more, we're worth more in the city of Montgomery, and I think that we need to set some precedence on what that looks like. So, um, I don't know if that looks like us doing some kind of study, um, on assessment on how many we have, and maybe how many businesses have declined us because we have too many, you know what I mean? Cause I know, we've reached out to Trader Joe's a couple of times, and it was a no, even in downtown Montgomery, so I, I, that's a concern of mine, cause...
So, let, let me, we haven't, uh, given up on the, some of the, um, I would say, ha, mid to higher end retailers, um, we've had a conversation with our chamber leadership just in, in the last, uh, three days about, uh, that, and we have a, a major developer who works with them, um, in particular, uh, Trader Joe's is one of them actually, uh, in other cities, uh, to assist us on what we need to do, what we need to show them from economic development, standpoint from a market study, as well as kind of what we may be, uh, open to do from the city side, so we've not given up on that. I do wanna say, um, as it relates to, um, any moratorium, you know, we talked, well, I don't think this predates you, but it may, a couple of years ago about tech cashing, um, um, places. So, I, I would love to have a conversation with, with leadership of the council and with any of you, uh, about what things that you consider ultimate is gonna come down to the council, uh, you know, creating that ordinance, um, and us making sure that we follow through on, does it fit with our Envision Twenty Forty plan? Uh, and making sure that people know that before they come in, so there's a certain type of retailers that we want, or certain type of retailers that we don't want in certain areas, then it's already, we're not there for them to understand, and then we can, uh, target our economic development efforts, uh, a lot better as well.
I agree, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I wanna add something to that, my wife and I ride down Atlanta Highway a lot, and she just, we both look at the car wash built right in front of East Dale Mall, it's blocked, you can't see through it. And I'm thinking, boy, we were just, we, and dropped the ball because it blocks the mall, the one on down the street, you can kind of see through it, it doesn't look as bad. So, Marsha, if we're gonna build them, let's build something that looks better, a concrete block right in front of the mall looks like.
It's a bad location, yeah.
Yeah, it, it, just don't look good.
Yeah.
We, I don't know how it got approved, I don't remember it coming in, I don't, I don't remember.
It didn't, it didn't, and they, and they don't have to, right? And so that's why I spoke with Stacy on what that looks like, because we have so many different types of car washes, we, I had to specify that I'm looking more at the automated, cause I know we have mobile car wash, and then we want those, but those ones that are just popping up, those tidal waves, they're popping up everywhere, and it, it's really becoming an eyesore, cause we get excited about development and being in the car wash, you know? So, um, I, I, I wanna say, I know I'm exploring it already, and, but I just wanna make sure that we are in our light, and I think that's a good idea to match that ordinance that I create with the Envision Twenty Forty, so we can identify, and I know Daryl already presented us with the plan for retail, so maybe to match that somehow, but, um, I'll get back, uh, follow up with Stacy on that, but I just want to make sure the counseling, you all knew, that this is something that we need to make sure we push and make a priority.
Well, I'll ask, uh, city attorney to follow back up, within terms legally, what the, um, what approaches we can take. It doesn't mean, you know, zero, it may just mean that you moderate how many, uh, that you all allow based on what the council, uh, is comfortable with, and so we'll, we'll, we'll share some, some options there, uh, for different classes of retail, because for one, it may be a car wash, or there may be, you know, another dollar store, for someone else, maybe, you know, a, a different type of retail, so we'll, we'll let that out, get that out, uh, through the city clerk and through you all as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else from, Madam Clerk?
I have one thing, uh, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Uh...
Can I do a show call? Can I do a show call on?
No.
Big Cat, uh, Package Store, um, thirty-eight zero four South Port Street, and it's for the safe and health of our community.
Big Cat?
Package Store.
Package. I will have a resolution setting the date for the next resolution.
Thank you.
For the next meeting, rather.
Alright, Mr. Pruitt?
Mr. President, I'd like to call a Public Safety, uh, Committee meeting for next Tuesday, whenever our council meeting is, Ms. Brenda?
I gotta give...
Our first council meeting.
I gotta give seven days' notice, it would've had to have gone out today.
What's our next council meeting?
Do it next Thursday.
I meant our next council meeting, I'm sorry.
The nineteenth of March?
No, no, two weeks from today.
I meant the first council meeting in March.
March fifth?
Yes.
So you wanna have it March the fifth?
Yes.
At what time?
Three o'clock. And Mayor, what we're gonna do is, Stacy and I had the opportunity to meet with Chief Albert and a couple of people the other day, and we talked about some incentives, some bonuses, we wanna talk about that. Mr. Samansky has looked at and talked to some banks here in town about first-time home buyers, just a whole bunch of stuff, that hopefully we can put something together to help you attract some more people. And I'll get with you, Ms. Brenda, to see who we need to invite.
Yes, Public Safety Committee, thanks. Yup. We have any contingency fund?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitchell?
I have one. Young, young, young man on the mission, five hundred dollars.
Oh, you're giving contingency?
Yes, ma'am.
Five hundred to...
Young man on the mission.
I got a letter from them too.
Okay.
District Five also, Ms., Ms., Madam Clerk, five hundred dollars for young man on the mission.
Okay.
Alright, anyone else?
I'm, I'm gonna do the Bellintra South Line, um, Dixie Youth League, twenty-five hundred, and, uh, the Nat King Coles Society.
Wait, 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 twenty-five hundred Bellintra South Line?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the rest of it?
Dixie Youth.
Dixie Youth. Okay, and the next one?
On Nat King Coles Society.
How much?
Twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
Big spender.
Okay.
Anyone else? That's it?
Need a motion?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Alright.
Mr. Calhoun?
Mr. Pruitt?
Ask one question, Mayor, have we ever looked at the cost of finishing this out, the auditorium, the upstairs, and all that stuff?
Not since I've been here, I, we can, but...
I don't even know if we have, is it a city or...
Is it what?
There's some people sitting up there now.
If he sees somebody, we need to go.
Alright, anything, anything else? Alright, need to join?